Ms. Coroll, please call the roll.
Trustee Adamson.
Present.
Vice Chair Rambula.
Here.
Trustee Bra. Chair Clark.
Present.
Trustee Fajardo.
Present.
Trustee Firstenberg. Trustee Fang.
Here.
Chancellor Garcia.
Here.
Trustee Gilarducci.
Here.
Trustee Gilbert Laurie. Trustee Goharda.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Trustee Lopez.
Here.
Trustee McGory.
Here.
Trustee Nezavat.
Here.
Governor Newsom. Trustee Rodriguez.
Here.
Speaker Rivas. Trustee Steinhouser. Superintendent Thurmond. Trustee Vargas. Trustee Malacar.
Here.
Chair Clark, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Coroll. In our continuing effort to provide accessibility and flexibility for the public, we will begin by taking all public comment before committees and plenary at the beginning of our open session. The Board welcomes public comment and appreciates all speakers who have taken the time to attend the meeting, both virtually and in person, to address the Board. And I want to emphasize that the Board's role during these sessions is to listen carefully and to consider every comment. It is not to respond or interact with members of the public. However, it would be a mistake to interpret our silence as a lack of engagement. To the contrary, as a Chair of the Board, I can assure you that not only are you heard, your perspectives and insights inform our work both inside and outside of this chamber. As has been the case in previous meetings, university presidents are seated around the dais so that they may better see and hear our public speakers as they address some of the CSU's most critically important matters. While public comment has concluded, our presidents will return to their usual seats. In the spirit of fairness to those who wish to speak and to allow the committees and the Board to hear from as many speakers as possible within the available time, please note that seating, pooling, or yielding remaining time to other speakers will not be permitted. I also ask that all speakers please keep their remarks concise. Each speaker has one minute for their comments. It is within this framework, we seek to create a space for diverse viewpoints where all members of our community may freely share their perspectives. We understand and appreciate that some comments may list an opposing perspectives or express disagreement with system or university leadership, and we understand that. At the CSU, we uphold the constitutional protections of the member of our community and view the right to free expression and open discourse as essential hallmarks of higher education. However, we ask that all who attend our Board meetings conduct themselves in a respectful manner that does not disrupt or infringe upon free speech or safety of others and that allows for the orderly conduct of this meeting. Please bear in mind that all proceedings of the Board, including public comment, are livestreamed and archived publicly online. Thus, it's especially important that we all remain mindful of our conduct. As a continued reminder, in addition to participating in public comment sessions, any member of the public may also submit written remarks to be shared with the full Board via email at trusteesoffice@calstate.edu. CSU stakeholders may also share their feedback with their respective statewide bodies, the Cal State Student Association, the statewide academic senate, and Alumni Council, each of which provides standing reports at every Board meeting. I thank you all for your attention, and now turn it over to Ms. Coroll to please call the speakers who requested to provide public comment. Ms. Coroll, please begin.
Thank you, Chair Clark. Good morning, everyone. If you are in person to provide public comment, please step to the microphones on either side of the auditorium when you hear your name. If you are on Zoom, once you hear your name, please accept the unmute request to begin your comments. Please remember that each speaker will have one minute to share their comments. If in person, a red light will show at the podium when one minute has passed. If virtual, a timer will be present on your screen. A reminder will be given at the one-minute mark to please conclude your remarks before we proceed to the next speaker to allow for as many people as possible to provide their comments. Our first speakers are Matthew Lang, Brian Dolber, and Elaine Bernal.
Governor Newsom, the President of this body stated May 14th that $252.3 million deferral, that is sacrosanct, they'll get that 5% bump. He knew he needed to do his part to keep a promise that the Chancellor's Council so badly wants to break at a time when leadership increases in compensation far outpace staff, a trend continuing tomorrow. Proper wages help create a robust economy, closes wage equity and gender gaps, improves the university's reputation, increases motivation, improves relationships between managers and staff, and improves health. It lowers turnover and raises productivity. But most of all, it provides a sense of safety and security to the most vulnerable when they are most vulnerable. I stand before you on behalf of the single parents who are barely holding on, those who have to work two jobs, those who are afraid every day if today is the day their life will be upended because of our fascist plutocracy and the threat of yet another broken promise, many of whom graduated from this system and promised of a better future, who aren't able to be here today, who are back on campuses doing their jobs, do yours.
I'm Brian Dolber, Department Chair and Associate Professor of Communication and Media Studies at California State University of San Marcos and CFA AUP representative from the South. Academic freedom in the CSU is under attack. As our nation spirals into fascism, TPM policies are being used against students who exercise their First Amendment rights and faculty who advocate for them. Sangha Kill, a tenured professor in Justice Studies at San Jose, is being threatened with termination for supporting students speaking out against genocide. Meanwhile, her colleague Jonathan Roth is on the Fall '25 schedule after he allegedly assaulted a pro-Palestinian activist on campus. While with this move, the CSU is not only destroying Kill's career and livelihood, they're also destroying the concept of tenure and telling faculty, students, and staff that their only choice is to be complicit with genocide. At CSU Channel Islands, John Caravelo is facing discipline for TPM violations for protesting budget cuts that threaten jobs and diminish the quality of education at the CSU. This is the same faculty who CFA and SQUE members spent two full days attempting to locate after he was abducted by ICE agents for defending his community. The People's University must not become Trump University. I call on the Board to rescind their TPM policies now.
I serve as an Associate Vice President for Lecturers South for the California Association. I'm also a CSU parent. My eldest is entering their third year. My younger child is a high school sophomore who hopes to attend a CSU. And my spouse is a full-time student and a math tutor at Long Beach City College's Math Success Center. We are a multicultural Black and Filipino family. I was raised and educated in Carson Public Schools, and my partner and our children have been proudly educated in the Long Beach Unified School District. We are a public education family through and through, like so many across California, we depend on it. Families like mine are not the exception. We are the CSU, the students, the staff, the faculty who make the system work. And yet, we are being priced out, laid off, and pushed aside. When beloved educators like Dr. John Caravelo, a kind principal advocate for justice, is detained for standing with immigrant communities...
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Laura Zabo Kubitz, Steve Roddy, and Lori Oberding.
Good morning. Shall I begin?
Please do.
Good morning. I'm Laura Zabo Kubitz with the California Alliance for Student Parent Success. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the recently enacted Gaines for Student Parents Act, which supports student parents in affording and enrolling in and completing college. Specifically, the Gaines Act calls on colleges and universities to account for student parents' true costs and student budgets so that they access the financial aid for which they're eligible and to collect and report data and resources to advance student parent success. We are grateful for the CSU's efforts to support multigenerational success, such as through the launch of the Pregnant and Parenting Students Initiative and the leadership shown at many campuses like Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, where the statewide Student Parent Summit will take place this September. In alignment with the Gaines Act, we respectfully urge the CSU Board of Trustees to review, approve, and disseminate a cost-of-attendance policy and student parent identification and data collection guidance this July. The alliance's implementation resources and our team are available to support the CSU with implementing these and other provisions to advance student parent success. Thank you.
Can I go ahead?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Steve Roddy, and I'm a member of California Scholars for Academic Freedom. I urge the Board of Trustees to reject San Jose State's efforts to dismiss Professor Sang Kill. This action represents a blatant attack on tenure, a core principle protecting free speech, freedom of expression, and academic freedom in higher education. Moreover, it violates the basic constitutional protections of the right to assemble and to air grievances, putting San Jose State on the side of the repressive forces that are pushing our country toward a future of barbarism. Speaking out against the genocide in Gaza...
Steve, we've lost your audio. Lori Oberding, if you're ready, we'll go to you next and come back to Steve.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I am here to bring light to the Cal Poly Swim and Dive Program that was cut March 7th, 2025, due to unforeseen budget cuts. The proposed 8% budget cut that was supposed to be coming from the state of California, that is now only three, and the shortfall of $425,000 due to the House versus NCAA case. Initially, we were asked to raise $25 million in two months, a historic endowment amount which raised flags with most people, which would donate within the swim and dive community. This was lowered to 20 and then 15, and we were only given three months to attain this with zero support from the school, no access to an alumni list. We reached $9 million combined funds by June 15th, and this donation and donations and pledges were still flowing in. It was apparent that we had established the ability to raise the funds, given the ability to do so in an appropriate time. These kids worked their whole lives to swim for Cal Poly, and this team was, you know, on an upward trajectory. So please get these athletes back in the water for September and allot us the appropriate time to raise the funds for the endowment. Please do this.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Ernesto Torres, Steve Phillips, Debbie Elia, and Drew Hala Agasle.
Good morning. My name is Ernesto Torres, Vice President of Teamsters 2010. I have served the CSU for eight years now, and I'm currently a Project Supervisor at CSUSB. The message is clear. The legislature and the governor kept their promises. Now we're going to hold the CSU accountable to keep theirs. Teamsters skill trade members continue to answer the call on emergencies. We continue to keep the lights on, the water running, and much more. Our priorities are safe campuses for our students. Teamsters and other unions went to Sacramento and lobbied for several cuts, and successfully our voices were heard. The proposed 8% cuts would have cost the CSU $375 million. And now the message is to punish the working class who advocated for you. We urge the Board of Trustees to take a step back, reflect on their decision, to take the commitment and fund our steps forward. Your decision will reflect what our work means to you and the campuses we serve. Keep your promise, CSU. We have always kept ours.
Our legislator and governor kept their promises. Now we are holding you accountable to keep yours. Hello. My name is Steve Phillips, local to many campuses up and down this state. Our cost of living continues to go up. Tuition continues to go up, and yet here we are, practically making less than we made last year. We're paying, you're paying us less while charging students more. Everything else costs more, and we make less as we continue to provide the same top-quality trades work year after year after year. We went to Sacramento and lobbied to get this money, and now you refuse to pay us less than 2% of what was received from the state. You give out almost $1 million in housing allowances every year to those making more than enough already, including you, Mildred, while us, who provide a pleasant and safe learning and living environment for 400,000 students, struggle to get by month to month. You want to pretend to get serious about the budget? Start by taking off the top. Keep your promises, and we'll continue to keep ours.
Legislature and governor kept their promise. Now we're holding you accountable to keep yours. I'm Debbie Elia, and I've been a staff member of San Francisco State University for 18 years, and I'm a Skill Trades Board Member of Teamsters Union Local 2010. I'm a supervisor in housing facilities and serve in a leadership role for Local 2010 as a steward and bargaining team member to ensure all members are treated fairly and with dignity. My recent raises have helped me, helped my quality of life. Living in the Bay Area is expensive. Additionally, my raises have allowed me to offer funds to my sister, who has a debilitating autoimmune disease. These raises have been critically important. We have fought hard to help mitigate CSU's financial troubles, and we are asking for reasonable pay increases to help all members' quality of life. CSU must keep its promise to its workforce.
Steve Roddy, go ahead and accept the unmute request.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry for that interruption, and I'll just finish my statement. So San Jose State's action violates the basic constitutional protections of the right to assemble and to air grievances, putting San Jose State on the side of the repressive forces that are pushing our country toward a future of barbarism. Speaking out against the genocide in Gaza is the right and the moral thing to do, on which large majorities of your students, faculty, and the wider community agree. By protecting Professor Kill, you will affirm those core principles of academic life and stand against the fascist forces that are decimating our intellectual communities, just as the Nazis did in the 1930s. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Jason Rabbinowitz and Tessie Reese.
Hello, trustees. This is Jason Rabbinowitz, Secretary Treasurer, Teamsters Local 2010. I'm here today to protest the CSU's disgraceful and illegal decision to break their promises to workers and refuse to pay promised raises, step increases, and general salary increases to our members. Even though the CSU is receiving full funding from the state, thanks in large part to our members who lobbied and fought for that funding. Our members have fought hard and long for decades to win the step increases back after many years that they were denied, and we are ready to fight again if the CSU continues down this path of denying the raises that we were promised and that are in our contract. If the CSU continues its misguided attempt to take away promised raises from our members, then you will find yourself in an expensive and disruptive legal and economic battle with the Teamsters Union that will cost many times more than the small amount that you may expect to save from stealing raises that were promised to workers. We demand that CSU reverse course, keep its promises to workers, pay the step increases that were promised in our contract. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tessie Reese. I'm the Unit 2 Chairman and LBN 2, and my campus is SDSU. And I have been at SDSU for 28 years. I'm addressing Chancellor Garcia and the Board of Trustees. I have been at the Board of Trustees for many years and have spoken for many years. The time is now for you all to step up and do the right thing. You have now owed the steps that we have fought long and hard for, and it's time to implement them fully, instead of backtracking and saying that you haven't gotten the money. The time is now to show your leadership, your respect, and your loyalty to the staff, faculty, and students who have been there for you, have fought the hard fight for you along with staff. So please take this in consideration and do the right thing. Implement the steps fully so that you can show not just your staff, faculty, and students, but the rest of the world that you're doing the right thing and you are good, strong leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Justin Malone, Tim Allen, and Ronald Lopez.
The legislator and governor kept their promise. Now we're here to hold the CSU accountable to keep yours. My name is Tim Allen. I have been a dedicated employee of CSU Islands for 28 years and a proud member of Teamsters Local 2010. I'm a supervising building service engineer and a campus steward. When I first started in 1996, we still had steps as part of our contract, and since then we have spent 25-plus years fighting to get them back. It took a strike and a thread of even longer strike to finally win them back. The only reason we agreed not to strike was because CSU came back to the table and made an agreement with the Teamsters on our new three-year contract. We didn't make a two-year deal. We made a three-year deal, and I have several members on my campus that are looking at 7% to 11% raise this last year to finally get them to their steps they should have been on. The CSU has cheated them for so long, and now you want to cheat them again by not honoring the final year of the agreement. Shame on you, CSU, and I demand that CSU keep their promises.
All right. I'm Ron Lopez from Channel Island State University. I'm a plumber. Went through all this stuff. I want you guys to keep your promise, legislator, you know? The money that came in, that went through, helped my family tremendously. I'm counting on it this time. I got a 16 and a 15-year-old. I find myself working more jobs than just the one there as a lead, and I'm on call. I'm the guy that shows up. If no one shows up, I mean, it could delay, I mean, hours and hours. So I gotta be the man on the spot. I'm there. It's not just the campus. It's the whole community we take care of, everything, the streets, the fire. And we gotta come together as a team to make it happen, you know? So I'm just out here because there's a lot of people that want to be here, and we're limited to so many people that can come. So I'm here to, hopefully this all falls through because we're ready to strike, and it's gonna get real, real, real fast, and it's gonna affect not just the college, it's gonna affect everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Maya Valrie, Jalen Ivesta, and Sarah Borjas.
Good morning, Board of Trustees. My name is Maya Valrie, Senior Policy Analyst at EdTrust West. We appreciate the efforts the CSU system has taken to support immigrant communities, especially amidst the federal landscape targeting immigrant communities across California. Students fear not only for themselves, but for their loved ones, and this has resulted in students from mixed-status families having to consider real safety concerns when deciding whether to share their personal information with the federal government through FASFA, meaning that some of your CSU students have opted out of the CADA. Although this gives them access to state financial aid, it requires them to bypass federal financial aid, such as the Pell Grant, work-study, and federal student loans. Thus, we respectfully request that the CSU leverages institutional aid to provide students from mixed-status families who decided not to apply to the FASFA with additional aid. Closing the financial aid gap for the student population will ensure that these students who are FASFA-eligible have the right to access federal aids safely and can continue to pursue their academic goals. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jalen Ivesta, and I'm a student at Cal State San Marcos, and I'm a member of Students for Quality Education. I am deeply troubled by the lack of official statements from this Board of Trustees on the ongoing unlawful detentions being performed by ICE throughout the state, and in the same vein, I am troubled by the lack of acknowledgement from the Board on the unlawful detention of Dr. Jonathan Caravelo, who was laid off due to exercising his right to free speech and protest. Many of your students are vulnerable. Many of your faculty and staff are vulnerable, and many of you are complicit in the ongoing violation of students and faculty rights. We are disturbed, we are scared, and we deserve to have the people who run our university speak on the issues currently relevant to the troubles that these university students and faculty face. It is your duty as leaders of this public university system to publicly speak about injustices, not duty as, not leave the public in the dark. History does not forget, and it is time to speak up and speak out against these injustices. We and myself stand in solidarity with Teamsters and the CSUEU. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Michael Donlin, Kendon Carlson, and Robert Crim.
Hello, my name is Michael Donlin. I've worked at Cal State Channel Islands for 11 years as an electrician. The legislature and the governor kept their promises. Now we're going to hold the CSU accountable to keep yours. I stand before you today with deep concern regarding the potential decision not to honor the existing contract with our dedicated Teamsters. This contract isn't just a piece of paper. It represents a commitment, a promise made to hard-working individuals who keep our campuses running smoothly. These individuals are the essential, are essential to the CSU system. They ensure the safety, the functionality of our learning environments. Disregarding our negotiated contract would be a grave disservice, undermining the trust and jeopardizing the stability of our workforce. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kendon Carlson, and today is my birthday, and I am here. I am here on my birthday as a proud Teamster 2010. I've been proud to be an electrician at CSU Channel Islands for over 12 years. I went to Sacramento with my colleagues and had impactful conversations with state legislatures on both sides of the table, and thanks to those conversations of those, and my colleagues, Governor Newsom changed his mind about cutting 8% to the CSU. I am saddened and frustrated that despite these efforts and a successful change, of course, by the governor, not only did the CSU in particular, Channel Islands, implement layoffs, even after we had Teamsters voluntarily take the early exit program, are now considering not keeping promise of raises that were negotiated in good faith on both sides of the table. These raises have been stifled for so many years, and now that we are on the verge of finally being able to put healthier food on our tables and put our children in better schools by earning compensation for a job well done, the Board of Trustees want to take that promise of a better life for my family and the families of my fellow Teamsters away. It's wrong, and I challenge each one of you to look inside yourself and do what I do every day, and that's the right thing, and keep the promise to my family.
My name is Rob Crim. I've been an electrician at CSUSB for 19 years. The legislature and governor kept their word, and now it's time for CSU to keep theirs. We've jumped through every hoop we had and fought every obstacle to get a contract and even included your budget contingency clause. Now that we have successfully won that battle and helped get you no budget cuts, and it's time to pay us what is owed to us, to try to take it away now is nothing short of criminal thievery. Myself and many have had to work second jobs just to get by, and the promised steps and raises are being counted on by so many to help ease that burden. We will win this fight, and it will only come at more cost to you. It's a concept, it's one of the first concepts that's taught to children. It's simple. Keep your promise. It's simple, keep your promise.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Erica Vera Montes, Tiffany Quarles, and Wendy Greenfield.
Good morning. My name is Erica Vera Montes and I serve as Director of School Counseling Programs with Greendot Public Schools. Across Greendot's 18 schools in the Los Angeles area, our counselors work alongside thousands of college-bound students, many of whom are first-generation, low-income, and from mixed-status families. These are bright, resilient students who dream of attending a CSU. They apply and they get accepted. But this year, we've seen far too many of our students forced to make an impossible choice, protect their family or apply for financial aid. Out of fear or to avoid disclosing family information, they opt out of submitting the FAFSA, which disqualifies them from vital aid they may need to attend college. These young people are not ineligible. They're simply working within a system that may put their families at risk. Without CSU's support through institutional aid, their college dreams may stall or disappear entirely. On behalf of Greendot, I respectfully urge you to act with compassion and leadership, to extend institutional aid to students from mixed-status families who for very real reasons cannot submit a FAFSA. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Trustees. My name is Tiffany Quarles. I'm here today to speak regarding SB 437 authored by Senator Akilah Weber-Pierson. I urge the Board to support redirecting $6 million allocated to the CSUs under this bill away from a redundant genealogical study and towards tuition assistance for students who descend from U.S. chattel slavery, also known as American freedmen. The California Reparations Task Force has already established lineage protocols, and certified genealogists are successfully using them now. SB 437 undermines the Black community by wasting resources on unnecessary research instead of addressing real, immediate needs. CSU's participation makes it complicit in delaying and potentially sabotaging tangible progress towards reparations. Redirecting these funds can remove financial barriers for hundreds of students by fall 2025. Let's stop stalling and start serving.
Morning. My name is Wendy Greenfield. Should I start now?
Please do.
My name is Wendy Greenfield. I'm a San Jose State University alumna, a retired public school teacher, and a leader of the Jewish Voice for Peace South Bay Chapter. Growing up Jewish in the wake of the Holocaust, I learned that fascism was enabled when not enough people spoke out against it, allowing for the consolidation of Nazi power and the ensuing genocide. That made me a lifelong social justice activist. And today I join as U.S. citizens protest as our government enables the genocide in Gaza. Some university students have paid for their protests with arrest and imprisonment. But San Jose State University students were fortunate to have the support of Professor Sanghi Kill, a staunch defender of the First Amendment. Professor should be honored, not terminated, for upholding the rights of students and faculty to protest. Support the move against fascism in this country by upholding freedom of speech. Please vote to rescind Professor Kill's termination. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Carlos Lara Rodriguez, Dennis Sotomayor, and Jorge Martinez.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Lara Rodriguez. I work at CSUSB in the Heating and Air Department. I'm in charge of about 300,000 square feet of real estate to make sure that students and staff get a comfortable and safe environment to work and study. I take pride in my work, day in and day out. I love to be of service to others. It is my passion. Our departments, our department choose, as others in our Facilities Division, is short-staffed. Vacant positions are not fulfilled due to budgets, budget shortfalls. The ones that are left behind take on more work. We do it graciously because we are people of service. When you decide not to pay us what was agreed on a contract, it's a disservice to California employees and students.
Good morning to this body, Chancellor, Trustees, Presidents. My name is Dennis Sotomayor. I've been a member, employee for 25 years at California State University of Los Angeles, a proud member of Teamsters 2010, also Union Coalition here. And we are here to bring to your attention that the legislator and the governor have kept their promises, and we're asking for this body to do the same. We have hard-working employees here across all the unions. The Coalition is here standing together to show how important these raises are and what a difference that they make in our lives. As a 25-year employee, I was on step three as of the first step of raises. I've been moved up, and I'm looking to get to my target step in this round. It's imperative, and it's made a huge impact and a difference in my family, and I'm sure it has for every one of these people here today. We thank you for your time and honor your commitments to the contract.
Chancellor Garcia, Board of Trustees, the legislator and governor kept their promise. Now it's time to keep yours. My name is Jorge Martinez. I'm a plumber at Cal State LA and a proud Teamster with Local 2010. Through our united lobbying efforts in Sacramento, we helped stop the governor's proposed 8% budget cut, which would have meant a $375 million loss for the CSU. Because of our joint efforts, our hard work, that funding was preserved. This year's Unit 6 raises cost around $5 million, less than 2% of what we helped CSU save. And yet, the CSU still refuses to pay us what we're owed. We showed up, we advocated, we delivered results. Now the CSU needs to do the same. We're not asking for anything more than what was promised. I respectfully demand that the CSU honor their word and do right by their essential workers who keep the university running every day. A contract is a promise. CSU, you must honor it. No excuses. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Thora Giallari, Tiffany Jones, and Krish Eidwani.
Good morning. My name is Thora Giallari, and I'm faculty at San Bernardino. And I'm calling on the Board today to stop the attack on Professor Sanghi from San, by San Jose State. Professor Kill has the constitutional right to attend a peaceful protest on public university grounds and the right to protest the genocide committed by the State of Israel against the Palestinian people. By attacking Professor Kill, this issue is simply attacking speech it does not like. In fact, San Jose reinstated the professor who last year physically assaulted a student protester, but is dismissing the professor who spoke against the genocide. I'm a professor of constitutional law, and I will say what any civil liberties lawyer would say, that this is an unconstitutional use of time-placed manner policies to silence faculty like Dr. Kill. I'm asking the Board today to pressure the CSU into rescinding Dr. Kill's dismissal and stop this appalling attack on academic freedom. Thank you very much.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Tiffany Jones, and I'm a history professor at Cal State San Bernardino and CFA Chapter President. And I stand in solidarity with CSUEU and Teamsters. At CSUSB, we are facing a crisis. Faculty are overwhelmed. We are teaching high course loads. And while our classrooms overflow with students, course caps keep rising, and we simply cannot provide the individual attention our students need. Because of so-called austerity measures, lecturers have lost their jobs, and those who remain are being pushed to exhaustion. We've seen our assigned time for research, teaching, innovation, and service stripped away, our input and shared governance ignored, and faculty who speak out are subjected to retributive disciplinary action. We are witnessing the merging of programs, including discussing the merging of our Ethnic Studies Department, which directly undermines AB 1460 and our campus's stated commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. This is not a financial issue, it's an academic and moral one. The quality of education is eroding, students are suffering, faculty are burnt out, and our mission is being compromised. I urge you to stop this erosion urgently before the damage becomes irreversible.
Good morning, CSU Board of Trustees. I want to know about, considering that I have been a student who has a documented disability, it has been very hard for me to transfer my IEP from high school to my freshman year at Cal State Fullerton. And I have been going, undergoing an ongoing mental health crisis, and I have been trying to get documentation for it. And I've been asking about the policies of remote learning and an extension in terms of a mental health crisis as well as financial assistance. That should cover rental costs, tuition, car payments, transportation, and food. And how will the CSU ensure that this happens?
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Jeffrey Phelps, Spencer Owen, and Dave Unger.
This one's for you. Good morning. My name is Jeff Phelps. I'm a proud member of Teamsters Local 2010 and have served as a dedicated plumber at Fulton and the Dominguez Hills for the past seven years. When we learned that you, Mildred, were going to be the next Chancellor of the CSU system, we felt a deep sense of pride, one of our own, rising from Dominguez Hills to lead the entire CSU. It was a moment of inspiration. Unfortunately, the pride has turned into deep disappointment. Dominguez Hills is the only campus that has faced Teamsters layoffs. Now to make matters worse, your administration is refusing to honor our contract. Let's be clear, we did our part. The Teamsters played a critical role in lobbying legislation and the governor to fully fund the CSU system. Legislation came through, now it's your turn to follow through on your word. We've been fighting for salary step system for over 20 years. After just one year in office, you and your team are trying to take it away. That's not just unfair, it's betrayal. Chancellor Garcia, it's time to keep your promises. Honor our contract, respect our work, and do the right thing by the people who keep our campus running every day. Thank you.
Good morning, Chancellor and Trustees, and my fellow union members. The legislature and government kept their promises. Now we're going to hold the CSU accountable to keep yours. I am Spencer Owen, a proud Teamster of Local 2010, a local loyal 10-year CSU state employee who works at CSUC as a plumber. I'd like to start off by saying thank you for the big, ugly disappointment. After lobbying for you and with my brothers and sisters in Sacramento, we received the big middle finger from Chancellor Million Dollar Millie and the Trustees. Now we, now instead we are getting, now instead of getting our next step raise in the contract, we get nothing. All of you had to do was complete the last year of the contract. During the last years, during the last 10 years of a hard-worked dedication working through the pandemic for you and your students, I now realize that the workers that keep your campuses working in order do not matter. Step up and keep your promises to complete the third year of your contract. We all know the money that you have. Even the 0% loans will help you out.
Your comment?
Hello, my name is Dave Unger. I work on Cal State Northridge. I've been there almost 25 years. It has been a fight for our pay for 25 years. You know, we finally get a contract, which was long and hard fought. We had to strike. I felt like we were begging for it. And you guys can't even honor a three-year contract? What's going on? We have five new buildings being built on our campus right now. Where does that money come from? You know, you're broke? That's, that's bull. You guys aren't broke. You guys shuffle money around, have different accounts, whatever? What are we asking for, fair pay? This is ridiculous. I'm tired of coming down here and speaking to you people. Feel like I'm begging for what's right. We've entered into a contract. Abide by that contract. That's the least you can do. Come on, people.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Dina Sabah, Nikki Flowers, and Furcon Oz.
Hello, and thank you for your time today. I'm Dina Sabah. I'm a San Jose State University alumni in chemistry. And the attack on tenure and free speech with the notice of firing issued to Professor Sanghi by CSU and San Jose State is a blatant attack on academic freedom and is a form of anti-Palestinian racism and bigotry. The CSU Board of Trustees should be doing everything in its power to protect academic freedom, protect freedoms of speech, and to protect the right to assemble and protest when our country is complicit in a live-streamed genocide and Holocaust. The CSU Board of Trustees must support Professor Sanghi and demand that San Jose State to immediately rescind the statement of dismissal. Her dismissal is indeed a form of racism. Supporting Palestinians and Allies students peacefully protesting an end to the mass slaughter of innocent civilians is the right and moral act. We must not tolerate any forms of hate, especially in today's environment. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nikki Flowers. I'm a current graduate student at San Jose State University. And we opened this meeting with emphasizing respecting the constitutional right to free speech, and that's what I'm here to talk about. The termination of Sanghi's tenure at SJSU is completely unacceptable and is a transparent attack on their pro-Palestinian advocacy, a complete disregard for her freedom of speech. Listing disregard for university policies as the reason for her termination doesn't hold up under any amount of scrutiny when you look at how Jonathan Roth, a professor who on video assaulted a protester the previous year, is allowed to resume his tenure at SJSU. The Board of Trustees and SJSU administration must answer for this blatant hypocrisy and disregard for freedom of speech. We demand that you reverse the termination of Sanghi's tenure. Speaking out about genocide is not a crime. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Mike Harris, Carlos Sanchez, and Matthew Benner.
Do I just start? Hi there. My name is Mike Harris. I'm a projects painter and chief union steward for the Teamsters 2010 at Cal State Long Beach. The legislature and governor kept their promises, and now we're here to hold you accountable to keep yours. The third year of that contract is when many of our members, the long-term workers, are brought up to where they should have been. They don't get the money back that they should have gotten all those years. It's a step towards giving them the money that they deserve. The third year, the third year of the contract is what you're trying to deny, right? It's a 3% increase for their budget, right? But for many people, it's a little tiny bit, a little tiny bit of what they've deserved for the last 18, 20 years. I mean, I've been there for seven years. I make less now than when I started. With the raises in, if you calculate inflation, I make less. These guys, you're killing them. And now you're trying to renege on the third year of the contract? Seriously, honor your contract. We went down there and made sure that your budget was there to make sure you could honor it. Do what's right.
And Board of Trustees and Chancellor Garcia, my name is Carlos Sanchez, and I'm a lead locksmith at San Diego State University, where I've been employed for the last 32 years. As a member of the Teamsters 2010 Bargaining Committee, I came here numerous times last year and a year before asking you to have your committee meet in good faith. But now I'm here asking that you honor the contract that you agreed to. As a longstanding employee, I am grateful and finally, to finally get to the step placement. However, there are still a lot of members that still have not reached their target step because you have not honored the third year of your contract. After months and months of rallies and even up to a one-day strike, we are finally able to come into an agreement and finalize the contract. we are finally able to come into an agreement and finalize the contract. Our lobby helped to restore your proposed 8% cut. It's time that you keep your promise and pay us our raises. The legislature and governor kept their promises. Now we're going to hold CSU accountable to keep yours. Thank you.
Our next speakers will be Charlotte Casey, Shelley Anne Collins, and Shamika Sadler.
I'm speaking on behalf of the San Jose Peace and Justice Center. We are advocating for the reinstatement of Professor Sanquill to her tenured faculty position at San Jose State. Her firing represents an attack on academic freedom, and it appears to be motivated by outside political pressure and efforts to restrict what can be said about the war on Gaza. It's shocking to us that a professor can be fired for that support of students who are speaking out to condemn an ongoing genocide, an activity that should earn them extra credit, not punishment. Please take action to rescind the termination of Dr. Sanquill at San Jose State. Thank you.
Good morning, trustees. My name is Dr. Shelley Anne Collins, Councilman, faculty, and dedicated advocate. I come before you with a clear call. We must urgently address the erosion of shared governance and the lack of administrative accountability across the CSU. HARA affirms that joint decision-making between faculty and administration is not just tradition, it is the law. And yet, across campuses, we're seeing administrators act with unchecked authority, disregarding consultation, violating procedure, and retaliating against those who speak up. This isn't isolated, it's systemic. When decisions are made without faculty input, the consequences fall hardest on our most vulnerable, our students. And nowhere is that more evident than in how we address mental health. We cannot meet rising student needs if those of us providing direct care are left out of the strategic planning, decisions about roles and responsibilities, or campus resource allocation. If this board is serious about shared governance, it must act. Institutionalize 360-degree evaluations of all administrators with input from faculty, staff, and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Nick Magana, Sam Campos, and Jesse James.
Now it's time for you to hold your promises. Good morning. My name is Sam Campos, and I work as a maintenance mechanic at CSUSB. I'm here today respectfully to, as a chancellor, to honor our raises. This race is not about money. It's about being able to support my families with this constant financial stress. I took my daughter on a strike with me to show her what it means to stand up for what's right. I believe in the promises made to us, but now those promises feel broken. How workers at the CSUSB are treated. This race will let me focus on my job of being a father, not having stress. It's about keeping your word. Honor this commitment will show that the university values our work and stands by its promises. Please invest in us and show us that our work and sacrifice matters. Thank you.
Our next speakers will be Yasmin Abdussami Oakley, LeShun Coleman, and Zynga Griffin.
Hello, my name is Yasmin Abdussami Oakley, and I am representing Palo Alto for reparations. And I am here to tell the board, please do not collaborate with the CLBC on SB 437, the bill that takes the money away from our youth and giving them direct assistance with college, and that is unacceptable. The, um... Excuse me. The bill definitely takes away from what the people need and puts it in the money of corporate, nonprofit, and into the money of the CSU. If you're not going to collaborate with them, please give the money back to the state. That is the way that you can honor our ancestors, not with this collaboration. Thank you.
Hello, hi. Good morning, Board of Trustees. Also Gavin Newsom. My name is LeShun Coleman. I'm also a volunteer of the Coalition of Justin Equable, California, as well as a CSU alum. And I'm just not going to sugarcoat. Six million from the SB 437 was supposed to support reparations, but instead of going to verify descendants of chattel slavery, it's being tied up in redundant study while we watch CSU face layoffs, budget cuts, and quite shifts towards funding students who aren't even willing to apply for a pass. So that's not equitable. That's the racer. So our people are carrying the most student debt, facing the highest barriers, and we still have to fight just to keep funding from being redirected. The geological verification systems already exist. The time for studies isn't over. This six million should go directly to tuition support for pre-millennial students. CSU knows how to run a financial aid program, so run one for us. Governor Newsom, if you really mean what you said about justice for our descendants, prove it. We know where the money is going. We see where the money is going, and we're not going to sit and stay silent. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Javier Moncaio, Hector Gomez, Ali Twaini.
The legislature and the governor kept their promises. Now we're going to hold CSU accountable to keep yours. My name is Hector Gomez, and I've been a loyal plumber at CSU San Marcos and a Local 2010 member for almost 10 years now. Somehow, here we are again, what seems like we're begging and fighting for our raises. The CSU continues to show their true colors, continues to fall short, and not keep their promises. Despite the disrespect and the greediness, me and my Teamster brothers and sisters continue to show our dedication and our hard work. As the cost of living continues to skyrocket, our wages seem just to stay the same. Because of us, we prevented the governor's 8% cut, which would have been $375.2 million. Our total Unit 6 raises is around $5 million, which is less than 2% of the money we helped CSU win. I'm here today to not ask, but to demand for me and my brothers and sisters to ask you to please keep your promise and take care of the ones that keep these campuses running. Thank you.
As the Teamsters Union and everyone in the coalition who's here for a one message, keep your promise, honor your commitment. You know what you need to do? We kept ours. When the budget was to be cut, each and every one of us called every legislatures across the party lines. It was no Republicans, no Democrats. It was protect higher education, protect the workers that they run, CSU, and everybody came through. If they came through, you should come through. Character is doing the right thing when no one is watching. We all watching you. Do the right thing. Honor your commitment. These contracts are hard fight. You're standing against the Teamsters who fight hard every day, not just for us, but for everyone who deserves justice, equality, fairness. We will not sit back. We will fight and we will win because our cause is just and our commitment to our members and to every workers in California is we will not stand back. Honor your commitment. Keep your promise. Honor your commitment. Keep your promise.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Sharice Cryer, Nathan Ricks, Teresa Montano, and Matt Mason.
Strongly oppose the Cal State University system using reparations funds to study Black American genealogy under SB 437. As trustees, you have a fiduciary social and moral obligation to act ethically on behalf of the CSU system. Using reparations funds lobbied for Black American grassroots communities for anything other than direct compensation is unethical, anti-democratic, and frankly, a betrayal. CSU has no genealogy department. You have no experts in this area and have never even advocated for these funds. Meanwhile, tools like ancestry already exist to trace the lineage. We are not science experiments. We don't need to be studied. We need reparations. This proposal is not research. It's theft. I demand you do the right thing. Say no to SB 437. Say no to stealing reparations for Black Americans. All the trustees should have received an email from me. By the way, Assemblyman Mike Gibson is a co-sponsor of SB 437. You traitor.
Hi, I'm Matt Mason. I've been working with the Sacramento State for 21 years as an auto mechanic. I'm on the Teamsters 2010 Skilled Trades Board and also a bargaining committee member. When we were bargaining with the CSU for our three-year contract, the initial ask was steps. We went right to the meat of the matter, and we asked for wages and to deal with an economic proposals first. The CSU did nothing but stonewall and wait. You're stonewalling and waiting with the CFA contracts, with the CSU contracts. You guys need to go back to the table. I stand in solidarity with my other union brothers and sisters as well, too. I'd been Longheart, and we fought many, many years for our three-year contract. We went through lots of actions. We went through lots of rallies. We held strikes. And we came up with a commitment. This is an agreement between us and the CSU. And so, CSU, the legislature and the governor kept their promise. Now we're going to hold the CSU accountable to keep yours. CSU, keep your promises.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Lisa Adikari, Mayika Velasquez, Angelina De La Torre, and Raphael Plunkett.
You missed one. Good morning. My name is Teresa Montano, and I am a professor of Chicano Studies at Cal State Northridge. I stand here today in solidarity with Professor Sanquill and John Caravello, who by example showed their commitment to our students and to our faculty and to the atrocities and injustices, whether they be in Gaza or in the fields of California. This year, as we open up our academic calendars and begin to plan for our students to return to us, we do two things. One, and we expect the CSU to do the same. One, we protect our students from any possible invasions of ICE, the Department of Homeland Security, or anyone who dares to scare our immigrant students from accessing the right to their higher education. Secondly, we will remain vigilant until the day that you rescind time, place, and manner policies and any punitive actions you take against our faculty who simply exercise their right to assembly and freedom of speech.
Lisa, please go ahead and accept the unmute request.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, CSU Board of Trustees. My name is Lisa Adikari, and I'm the parent of a high school student who will soon choose a college to attend in the near future. I'm extremely concerned that San Jose State reinstated history professor Jonathan Roth, who attacked a Palestinian student, but is terminating Dr. Sanquill, a teacher who, a professor who was supporting students' rights to free speech, academic freedom, and peaceful right to protest. This is a grossly racist and bigoted decision. Her termination has been shrouded in the kind of vague references to rules that repressive power hides behind while blatantly violating her right to due process. San Jose State CSU hypocritically displays the victory salute Olympic Black Power statue while punitively punishing professors for their right to academic freedom and undermining and censoring students protesting the horrific genocide and ratio of Palestinians in Gaza and the brutal and illegal occupation of the West Bank. Thank you.
My name is Malika Velasquez. I come to you... Hello? My name is Malika Velasquez, and I come to you not in the capacity of a member of the boards and commissions on which I sit, but as a member of the freedom community about to watch the potential theft of resources from my people via SB 437. This theft rooted in blatant racism because no other group has been denied repair in this manner going on two centuries under the guise of ignorance of the repair process and continual studies. Also, as you know, the CSU does not have a genealogy program, so this money would be stolen from my people by the CSU to build a genealogy department and then to study the process of genealogy when there are already entities in existence to accomplish this task. Since when is an entity given millions as the chosen expert for something in which it has no documented expertise? Trustees, tell the governor, you will not be a part of this theft of resources from my freedom community, that you will not find yourselves on the wrong side of history, and that you will reject this money.
Hi, is it a... Should I start?
Please do.
Okay. Hello, my name is Angelina De La Torre. I'm a former CSU Channel Island student, a recent graduate. And today I am here to address the kidnapping of Dr. Jonathan Caravello by ICE. How do you want to be remembered? 20 years from now, are you going to be on the right side of history? Or will you fail your students time and time again, this time by repressing their freedom of speech? Professor Sanquill supported her students' First Amendment right and is now facing dismissal. Professor John Caravello was kidnapped by ICE and is now facing federal charges, all because these two individuals refused to be quiet and let their students suffer. As someone who has personally worked with Professor Caravello during my time with SQUE, I can attest to him being one of the most empathetic, upstanding individuals I have ever met. Do you believe that it is enough to just say you support John Caravello, that you stand by him? Until you back up your words with action, they are nothing but empty words. You all have the opportunity to change this right now. Follow in his footsteps and fight for the safety of your community. ICE has no place in our state, let alone places where young people are merely trying to improve their lives through education. Put your money where your mouth is and declare all CSU sanctuary campuses. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Vaya Cheslov Vedotov, Catherine Cobb, Margarita Berta Avila, and Fadi Saba.
My name is Slava. I've been in San Jose State University for 11 years. You know, I was born and grew up in Soviet Union. And what's going on today, not much difference. Back then, few handful of people in Politburo behind Kremlin wall, get a power, get a money, and pull on the rest of the population, stay poor. And the same, people from our Politburo here behind this wall, grab a money, grab a power, given them by the taxpayer of United States people and the state of California, and decided to keep it and pull on everyone else. Not much difference. Welcome back to USSR, Slava, 35 years later.
Good afternoon. Colleagues, and having to come here time and time again to beg you for money. I'm Catherine Cobb, president of Teamsters Local 2010. Just weeks ago, our members stood united with other CSU members at the Capitol, helping to secure additional funding to offset deferred funds. And yet, the Chancellor Office moved to reopen our contract and attempted to take back our raises we fought so hard to win. Let's be clear. This reopener is based on distorted narrative. It falsely firms deferred funding as a cut and ignores the additional budget measure suspensively designed to support CSU through this period. Our members bargained in good faith. You didn't. And now, CSU is threatening to break that agreement. How terrible is that? Our members will not allow it. Our members will not stand for this disgraceful, disrespectful action from CSU. Our union is ready to take whatever action is necessary to defend the raises that CSU promised. Reject this harmful move. We demand that CSU honor your commitment. Do what you need to do. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Margarita Berta Avila, and I'm president of the California Faculty Association. And we are here today in solidarity with our union siblings to demand that the CSU keep its promise to workers, specifically our Teamsters and CSUE raises. We are holding you, Chancellor Garcia, Board of Trustees and administrators alike accountable. There is no excuse when the CSU is being fully funded. Our union members across the state are the ones who protected ongoing state funding for the CSU. Because of that work, the CSU no longer faces an ongoing cut of 3% to its base funding. Chancellor Garcia and campus presidents, you have previously used this to propose state funding cuts to justify layoffs and program eliminations across the CSU system. Now, it's time to rescind that. The CSU keeping its promise to workers is also about having the courage to not capitulate to a presidential administration that is sanctioning oppressive practices and policies with that sole purpose to terrorize, frighten into silence, and even scare people from asserting their First Amendment rights. As a union, we are committed to showing up for our immigrant communities like Dr. John Caravello did as he was abducted last week by ICE, a member, leader of our union to protect against the invasion of ICE. And it's up to you, Board of Trustees and CSU management, to do the same on our campuses. You must refuse ICE's physical access to all land owned and controlled by the CSU. And lastly, if the CSU administration, BOT, is truly committed to fostering leadership, diversity, equity, and community solidarity, then it must repeal your approach, Chancellor Garcia. This anti-freedom, free speech, anti-academic freedom, and anti-union time, place, and manner policy specifically for faculty like Dr. San Kill and others in the future. It suppresses the freedom to protest academic freedom and free speech. We are the People's University, and we are united here today to hold you accountable.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Dana Dorsey, Darlene Crumery, and Hura Aljande. Dana, please accept the unmute request. Darlene, go ahead and accept the unmute request.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Darlene Crumery, and I'm here to strongly oppose the California State, the USC system using reparations implementation funds, especially those earmarked under SB 437 for genealogy studies on black American Freeman. It is especially harmful to subject black American Freeman seniors who have endured generations of systemic injustices to further academic research, particularly after a comprehensive two-year study by the California Reparations Task Force, which had over 100 recommendations. The CSU system lacks a genealogy department, qualified lineage verification experts, and any meaningful history of advocating for reparations. These funds should go directly towards implementation and reparations, not towards turning our senior citizens into research subjects. This approach is disrespectful and a betrayal of public trust. Thank you.
Dana, please accept the unmute request. Moving forward, our next speakers will be Rama Maladi, Ryan Witt,
I'm here.
Akila Ananth.
Can I go?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dana Dorsey. I strongly oppose SB 437. Those funds should be used for reparations. Along with SB 437, there are other bills for the road to repair. It's more like the road to disrepair. As a collective, the California legislative Black Caucus that brought those bills to the forefront disgraces us and dishonors our ancestors. Thank you.
Rama, Ryan, or Akila?
I'm a student at Channel Islands, and I'm with Students for Quality Education and Students for Justice in Palestine. Hello, President Yao. We haven't talked since the encampment, but good to see you. The restrictive time, place, and manner policy is being used to peaceful protest. Myself and another student received several TPM violations for simply peacefully protesting against mass layoffs. Other student, organizer named Angel Marie, was repeatedly stalked, targeted, and even assaulted by our racist campus police. Our professor, Jonathan Caravello, was targeted and laid off for supporting us. Right after that, he was illegally kidnapped and disappeared by ICE. Shamefully, the Board of Trustees has not condemned this and has not lifted a thing to try to make the charges dropped. At the same time, Professor San Kill at SJSU is being fired for simply supporting her students' rights to peacefully protest against Israel's ongoing livestream genocide in Palestine. The restrictive time, place, and manner policy must be abolished. The attacks on students and faculty must end, and the CSU must stop funding genocide. We stand in solidarity with CSUEU and Teamsters. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free.
Hi, my name is Akila Ananth. I'm a professor in the School of Criminal Justice and Criminalistics at Cal State LA. Millions are about to starve to death in Gaza, and my city, the city of Los Angeles, is under a military takeover by our own federal government. In this context, don't do the orange guy's work for him. You can do something different. You can revoke TPM policies which echo the violences that we have seen in Los Angeles by ICE and the National Guard. You can support Dr. Kill. You can support Dr. Caravello. You can restore the budget and give my union siblings the raises and steps that they deserve, that they fought for, that we fought for and deserve earned. That's right. You know, don't echo the violences of the big beautiful bill. Don't be the orange guy. You can be with us. You can be our champion. You can be a Californian, raising the students that will sit in your seats one day, hopefully.
Our next speakers will be Nichelle Henderson, Nicholas Asper, and Raymond Williams. Raymond, go ahead and accept the unmute request.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, my name is Raymond Williams. I'm calling to strongly oppose the California State University system using reparations funds to study black American Freeman genealogy under SB 437. As trustees, you have a judiciary, social, and moral obligation to act ethically on behalf of the CSU system using reparations funds lobbied for by Freeman grassroots communities for anything other than direct conversation is unethical, undemocratic, and frequently a betrayal. CSU has no genealogy department, no experts in this area, and never even advocate for these funds. Meanwhile, tools like ancestry always exist in trace lineage. We are not science experiments. We don't need to be studied using reparations because the Japanese got their reparations, Jewish community got their reparations, so we want our reparations. We don't need no more studies. That's actually disservice to our ancestors. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Rochelle Callies, Mike Gack, and Lauren Cannon.
Am I number one or number two? I'm gonna go ahead and jump in anyway. I'm a 20-year employee at Cal State San Marcos, proud member of CSUE, standing in solidarity with the Teamsters and CFA. Let's call this what it is. You are complicit in a dangerous slide toward fascism and authoritarianism. By tacitly going on with the defunding of higher education for decades by a weak advocacy and inaction, raising student fees and underpaying the faculty and staff who make the CSU even possible, you're not just following a neoliberal agenda, you're betraying the mission of the People's University. You silence protests with authoritarian time, place, and manner policies. You refuse to make the CSU a sanctuary for undocumented and mixed-status students and workers. You hide behind policy while people suffer. This isn't neutrality, it's surrender. It mirrors the exact playbook Trump and his allies use to crush resistance and break public institutions from the inside. But here's what you can do today. Keep your promise. Full step pay raises for staff, deliver justice to the very people who keep the campuses running, often invisibly, but always responsible, still to CSU's mission. This is your moment. Side with the workers, side with the students, or be remembered for siding with power. Keep your promise, or we'll shut the system down.
On your mic, I said, go. My name is Dr. Cannon. I've been teaching at Humboldt as a contingent academic laborer for two decades. I've been thinking about what happened to our colleague and union sibling, John Caravello, and what this moment means for our country and the People's University. I have two points today. First, if each of you haven't taken time and quiet contemplation and considered what it would feel like to be unjustly apprehended, detained without notice of your loved ones, knowing that you could be transported out of the country or physically beaten, if you haven't engaged in this practice of empathy for John Caravello and thousands of Californians, then you do not deserve to be a decision-maker for the People's University. Secondly, you have the responsibility to respond to this moment. You know that ICE is poised to intimidate, threaten, and kidnap our students, faculty, and staff this fall. You need to rethink and rescind your draconian TPM policy and support members of the campus community to collectively push back with dignity against the forces poised to decimate the People's University. The decisions you make now will determine whether your legacy is one of shame or respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Christina Seisel and Yusuf Baker. Our next speakers will be Deborah Hamm and Michelle Ramos Pelicula.
Hello, everyone. My name is Deborah Hamm. I am unmasked. I am saying my name publicly. I am here as a retired, after 33 years in the CSU, proud faculty member, but I stand up for my community, for my students, for my chickens, believe it or not. And I was planning on working in my garden, and I can't. I've been up since four, not afraid of speaking to you, because I'm a faculty member after all, but because of the level of fear that I feel from my students, our staff, and our faculty, we have to stand up. Not all of them can stand up. They're vulnerable. I'm not, never have been, but they are. So for my poor chickens, when the hawks came, I put up netting, which I didn't want to do, to keep the hawks out. My chickens are safe. I want my students to be safe. I want my community to be safe. Do whatever we have to do. Keep your promise and keep us safe, please. It's so important. That's it.
Buenos dias, Board of Trustees. Michelle Ramos Pelicia, a proud Afroboriqua, professor at CSU San Marcos, and vice president for the California Faculty Association. In solidarity with our, with my union siblings, the current presidential administration continues spreading the culture of cruelty and terror in our immigrant communities, separating families with sweeps and raids, kidnapping people from the streets, detaining both undocumented folks and defenders, like our brother, like our sibling. The harm inflicted in our communities will be long-lasting, particularly in our mental health. When talking about the future of students, how are the most vulnerable supported in today's period of terror? Undocumented folks, folks with mixed-status families, black, brown, Asian, women, members of LGBTQIA community are also students in our campuses. How do we sustain a culture of care when access to mental health takes days, weeks, and months? The abuse and the attacks on our immigrant community demands responding aggressively, expanding mental health services that includes hiring more full-time, tenure-track, mental health counselors. That's the cultural care. Show your care, we'll stop in a moment. Show your care about students, faculty, staff, and community members. Demonstrate where CSU administrators only curiously stand.
Hello, I'm Christina Seisel, campus president of CFA Fullerton. I'm here today to add my calls for the CSU to meet the moment and unequivocally support our First Amendment rights on the campus. The draconian TPM policies threaten the very lifeblood of the university. We have faculty, Sanha Akil, at San Jose State, facing dismissal for fighting and standing up for her students as they advocate against a genocide. A justice studies professor, her removal might jeopardize tenure. A justice studies professor fighting a genocide. We also have Dr. John Caravello, who was kidnapped by ICE two weeks ago and disappeared for a weekend. And he is standing up for our communities, and we need to stand with him. And we need to make sure that our faculty and students are protected as they engage in their First Amendment rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Alejandra, Alejandro Villapondo, and Rajbir Singh Judge.
Do I go? Is it working? Okay. Hey, what's up, everyone? So, my name is Rajbir Singh Judge. I graduated with a BA from CSU Chico in 2010, and now I'm an assistant professor of history at CSU Long Beach. And I wanted to speak to the announcement of the new president of CSU Long Beach. CSU Long Beach needs a leader in place that understands that decisions about race, which have always been questions of religion and region and more, cannot be made based on claims from donors, lobbyists, and the like, who are redefining boundaries of acceptable events and slogans like "from the river to the sea" and more. Consider my own experience. When I tried to do an event on the Indian States violent genocide of six in 1984, I was told that donors would not approve. was told that donors would not approve of the event by someone in charge, not trained in South Asian studies, but still head of the Indian Studies Center. And then when one stands up for oneself, one can often be classified as a problem, as we see with Professor Keel. So how will the incoming president effectively allow for disputes that constitute knowledge production while continuing to respect faculty expertise, which requires paying us well and reducing our course load?
Alejandra Villapondo. Otherwise, our next speakers will be Dani Dewery and Melissa Hidalgo. Melissa, go ahead and accept the unmute request.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Melissa Hidalgo. I am a lecturer in the Women's Gender and Sexuality Studies Department at Cal State Long Beach, a proud member of the CFA Faculty Union. I stand here in solidarity with all my union siblings here today. Cal State, pay us. Honor your promise. Fulfill the contract. I'm also here to say, we are an anti-racist and social justice union of public educators committed to upholding academic freedom. We resist and reject oppressions in all forms, from Trump's violent ICE raids in our communities to the chancellor's repressive time, place, manner policies on our campuses. Today, I'm here to call on the chancellor and board of trustees to immediately repeal all Cal State TPM policies, to rescind all attempts to sanction and fire faculty like Dr. Keel at San Jose under these TPM rules. Rescind them. Don't punish faculty. And denounce ICE. Stand behind the CFA students. Prioritize safety of all students, staff, and faculty by implementing policies that keep ICE off our campuses. Thank you.
Our next speakers will be Indy Singh, Audra Walton, and Kansa Jones Mohammed.
Just thought I would add a little bit of sacredness in there. These are tough times right now, and just want to acknowledge all of you, the board of trustees, all the people working in the different capacities. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work trying to wrangle with the stacking disasters that are on top of each other, both from the international, national, and the individual scales all throughout our communities, how disasters are stacking in different ways for different communities. I'm just coming in here with both the offering of bringing sacredness to these conversations for more collaboration, more coherence, and creating coherence between the people in California who are incredibly knowledgeable and skilled. I mean, I just can't believe how much things are possible in California. So I'm just planting the seed to both have more deeper discussions with the board of trustees around donor economics and how we can actually invest in disasters. And actually, the investment, that $1 invested in disasters saves $13. So what if we're more proactive with the Cal State system, actually creating these islands of coherence around disaster resilience and making jobs around that? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Audra Walton, second-generation American freedman born in California. I have the third and fourth generation Californians right here behind me. I'm speaking for my lineage today, advocating that this body redirect SB 437 funds from studies to solutions. $6 million for another study is redundant and runs unnecessary. When Ancestry.com and the Afro-American Historical and Genealogical Society have already done this work, it's not progress, it's procrastination. We don't need more research to prove our lineage. We need action. Redirect these funds to subsidize access to existing databases for freedman families. Train community genealogists. Build the Freedmen's Bureau digital infrastructure, provide tuition assistance, and student debt relief for freedman descendants. This money could erase student debt, digitize lost and forgotten records, or grant 10,000 families access to existing ancestry tools. Instead, it risks vanishing into contracts and committees. AB 3121 gave us a roadmap. Demand our legislators follow it. No more delays. Our histories proven, our justice is overdue. Put the money where it belongs, directly in our hands. Thank you.
Kansa, go ahead and accept the unmute request.
Kansa Jones Mohammed, vice chair of Los Angeles Reparations Advisory Commission, president of the National Assembly of American Slavery Descendants and founding steering member of a coalition for just and equitable California, standing in opposition to SB 437 granting $6 million to CSU to study genealogy protocols when certified genealogists already have established systems. The genesis of this bill from Akila Weber required her and the CLBC to sabotage a freedman agency with genealogy administration that reparations advocates and beneficiaries helped Senator Bradford write and champion to a final assembly vote, only to have the bill placed in a suspense file at the request of Governor Gavin Newsom and incoming 2025 CLBC members. Reject these funds. They don't go directly to beneficiaries. If you choose to accept the funds, use it as tuition to support freedman descendants. People like my mom and grandmother, who actually are the survivors of racist governance, do not have time to wait. They're never going to attend a CSU, and I ask that you do what the governor and the CLBC would not. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Alyssa Davis, Tayla Ramon, and Kay Chun.
My name is Alyssa Davis. I'm a CSULB student and here with Students for Quality Education. In my time I have been at Long Beach, I have not once felt that students' needs have been prioritized. You have raised tuition, you've used TPM to limit students' right to protest, and despite mass deportation and ICE's violence in California, you have not made any formal commitments to protect undocumented students, faculty, and staff. Not only have you chosen to look the other way, but you have made campus police and administrators your puppets, and you use them to sentence anyone who speaks up. The CSU TPM policy is disgraceful, but it was just your first step in limiting students' and faculty's ability to express their concerns. Now we have a new student conduct policy that only makes these restrictions even more extreme. If the CSU not only welcomes but celebrates freedom of expression, why is it that students who protest and voice their concerns are threatened with student conduct violations and harsh punishments like expulsion? No matter how hard you try, you will not silence me, my fellow students and faculty, nor our union siblings. I am proud to stand in solidarity with Teamsters and CSU U.
Hi, my name is Telha Raymond. I'm a second-generation alumni of CSU Chico, class of 2012. I'm just submitting this public comment to denounce the termination of Professor Sang Hill Keel's tenure at SJSU. I'd just like to take a moment to thank the CSU Board of Trustees and those at SJSU for giving me the experience of knowing what it would feel like to live in Nazi Germany, knowing what it would feel like to live in a racist society, knowing what it would feel like to live in a society without freedom of speech, and knowing what it would feel like to live in a society based in hypocrisy, where those who attack peaceful protesters are safeguarded, and those who try to speak out for justice are punished. So thank you for that invaluable experience.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Kay Chun and Dora Rosen.
Good morning, Chair Clark, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Garcia, and fellow union members looking to my stand in solidarity. I also speak to the soon-to-be-announced president of Cal State Long Beach. My name is Dr. Kay Chun. I'm council faculty and a licensed psychologist at CSU U for 20 years, also a proud member of the CFA. Students at our HSI campus, many of them first-generation college students, are now living in abject fear of being swept up in federal enforcement raids, being racially profiled, having their parents deported, worrying about how they will care for younger siblings while carrying a full course load, working a part-time job with less financial aid and no Medicare SNAP or other benefits, or are worried about having a student thesis revoked, losing scientific research funding, or receiving a TPM violation that will jeopardize their academic careers. Now, more than ever, CSU students need access to high-quality mental health care on campus, but CSULB continues to have the worst student-to-council ratio in the entire CSU system, with poor morale and shockingly high turnover. We urge you to work immediately to move CSULB to the national IX standard to retain more psychologists. Council faculty need better working conditions. Students show up to learn, better themselves, and uplift their families every day. Now it is our turn, and your turn, to show it for them.
Thank you. Chair Clark, this concludes our time for public comment.
Thank you very much. I assure you, we appreciate your attendance, we appreciate your conviction, and we respect your perspectives. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break, and then we'll return and begin, I'll begin with the chair's report, and we'll go to reports from the various constituent groups. So we'll return at 11:22. Thank you all.
Congratulations, graduates, on all that you have achieved.
All right, fam. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. I'm just gonna be on real quick, because, you know, I'm multitasking here. Just wanted to show this livestream on the CSU Board of Directors here. And that was it. I'm gonna go through the comments, and then I'm going to shut it down. So I hope everyone has a wonderful day, and we'll see you next time. We're gonna be having Chris Lodgson on hopefully this Thursday, I believe, from like about 6:00 to 7:00. So please join us. He's going to be having a wonderful conversation with us about what's going to be happening here in California regarding reparations. All right, so we will see you next time, and we're out. So let me just go through these comments, and we'll wrap up. As always, peace and reparations.
The way it currently stands, forced labor, slavery takes precedence over rehabilitation and public safety.
Oh, by the way, while the Biden administration gives reparations to everyone but free people, look at the billions he has run over to Ukraine.
We don't have black grocery stores, because if you think about it now, just to get in that supply chain, it's almost unheard of.
They don't want the troops to get out there. Okay? I don't want to know what my family did, or what all these people did, and all this stuff like that. Okay? You read that 500-page report.
There's this thing called white superiority and black inferiority. That mindset allows all of the behaviors that we've seen across generations, allows for the construction of these policies and practices and systems and structures that continue to oppress us.
This is not a handout. This is a debt that is owed.
You know, Allen's Worth was like the internet of its time in 1904, 1905.
The total black population in California is about 2.6 million, and then of that, the descendants compose about 2.2 million of that. So California with a multi-billion-dollar surplus can absolutely afford to satisfy the international terms for reparations, beginning with compensation.
Any financial obstacle that exists that impedes the success of increasing financial prosperity needs to be dealt with and eliminated.
No matter where we've been, no matter what part of this fight we've been in, we've been harmed, and we've had harm done specifically.
When I got to Los Angeles, this was some of the worst segregation I'd ever seen. And remember, I'm telling you, I'm from Mississippi.
Because, as you can see, I'm giving you broken history right now, you know? But I had to give it to you guys today. I said, "No, I gotta show them this because it's so precious, and nobody really knows about it."
Black people don't have that kind of luxury. Our historically black communities have been redistricted multiple times.
Now, listen. If you can't handle the TR moves, don't tune in.
Please move item 7172 to the enacted file.
I just wanted to know, what did you know about bills not being brought to Florida? Two critical reparations bills, Senate Bill 1403 and Senate Bill 1331.
Because there's over 1,000. I'm not very good at the numeric, but...
The analysis that it's only a couple million dollars to standardize.
Peanuts.
And just our was, we want to do it in a different way. We don't want to do it through creating a whole new bureau. We want to do it through the UC system.
So this is Assemblyman Mr. Bryan. He's mad I brought up the reparations vote. So he's preventing me from speaking, and he's trying to block my access here.
Madam Speaker, I ask that we take up file item 71, SB 1331.
If you decide to start your family tree even without the DNA, eight or nine times out of 10, you're gonna find your family.
A great number of African-Americans can trace their lineage to the period of enslavement.
Lamert was developed by Walter H. Lamert, and in his designing this area, he actually had covenants to where they would not sell to black people.
We should have a conversation.
Then bring the bill.
Will you vote?
CLBC, can you give them a grade 1 to 10?
Oh, this current process, as of now, is the negative.
Vote for the bill, Mr. City.
Bring the bill.
Will you vote for the bill?
Bring it up.
Will you vote for reparations?
Bring it up.
I would love it.
Bring it up.
Let's vote for reparations together.
It's a spirit of anti-blackness, and we must call it out. And so I'm gonna call out on August 31st, 2024, that the California Legislature, the Black Caucus, the majority of them, and the governor...
and the governor allowed the enemy to use them to try to keep us down and keep us as bottom-class citizens.
I just think that all the other members have at least about 10 years left, so we're not going anywhere.
I've heard it's slightly changed, and some of the advocates who were part of the Coalition last year around are now expressing concerns of whether or not they'll still be able to stand behind it if those changes are not corrected.
In so many years, it will hardly be no Black folks left in California. We love y'all, we thank y'all, and we demand reparations right now. First of all, America, from the evidence that they gave us, you're guilty.
What happened on August 31st, 2024 was a betrayal.
We know that if we don't have our hand in this process as much as we possibly can, it can be corrupted from the outside. So in terms of our role, our role isn't done until they are issuing the checks for our reparations.
The time for reparations is now. Yeah. Right now. What do we want? 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 What do we want?